Okay, I'd like to get started, please. Welcome to the October 23rd, 2018 work session. Just a couple of quick announcements and reminders before I turn over to the superintendent, before I turn the meeting over to the superintendent. We do have, for board members, our regular school board meeting on November 13th. We also will be starting that meeting a little early at 11:30 because we have a necessary HR hearing. So just be aware, we'll be starting that meeting a little bit early on November 13th. In addition to that, just a reminder, on the 20th, we have our reorganizational meeting. So please put that in your calendar as well. Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. At this time, we have policy updates that will come before you first is the first item. And we have Ms. Saj that's going to come up and review the policy updates from staff and Neola recommendations.
Hello again.
Hey.
Before you today, we have one staff recommended policy, which is really board recommended, and that's the volunteer policy. And what we've tried to do there is incorporate, from your discussion at the last work session, we've taken out the cost and made sure that it stays so there's no cost to a volunteer to have a background screening. And then we put an appeals committee in there where only members from the Safe Schools Office are the only ones that can make a recommendation. You can take something to appeal, but it has to be recommended by the staff in the Safe Schools Office.
Do they have any, Ms. Saj?
Are we going, because we can't approve this tonight, so are we going to set aside policies so that they can continue with the $25 tonight? Will do that?
And that was discussed at our last meeting, yes, but that we set aside policies until the beginning of the year because we do more work and research on that.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson?
So we did set aside the $40 until the beginning of the year, and I think what I heard from the board was that they wanted to set aside all the costs, correct? And that's the new policy?
The new policy, when it is approved, says at no cost to the volunteer.
Thank you. So in the meantime, they're still paying the $25, I guess, or are you just, you're just not doing that until the beginning of next year?
My understanding is that they are still charging the $25 until the policy becomes effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
On the paragraph that talks about background screening would be included in the LPLA, sexual offender, et cetera, I noticed that the statute has been taken out.
Right.
And so that gives us the flexibility to do it a little bit differently as it relates to looking at individual situations.
No, we took that out because our practice right now is all felonies through misdemeanors three years prior misdemeanor. And so that list included was, wasn't as broad as all felonies and misdemeanors, and so that was why we took out the records to it.
So this makes it clearer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Townsend?
Does that back to, makes it slightly more restrictive than correct with that, than it read?
It makes it more restrictive than state statute, but that's always what we've been doing.
Right, so it's always what we've been doing.
Okay. And then the other set of policies were Neola recommended policies. There were five of them. Student supervision and welfare, bullying and harassment, purchasing, procurement with federal funds, and disposition of surplus property. Are there any questions?
Ms. Saj, could you comment on how like the changes that were made in those for the board?
Yeah. Student supervision on welfare is to align with the requirements of 7026, and it talks about instructional staff members and actually any staff member. We put the instructional one forward, and we will make the same changes in all the other staff policies. And it just talks about them reporting suspicious activities and threats. Bullying and harassment makes a change according to statute that it added school bus stops to the areas where bullying and harassment cannot occur, and it made a slight change to the investigations, excuse me, language, which was something we had worked out with US DOJ, US DOE Office of Civil Affairs regarding a case we had, purchasing. Also, we're, because of changes to the rule, the state rule on purchasing, there, and then there was one change where there was a reference to a hundred, purchasing at a $150,000 level, and it was supposed to be $50,000, so we struck that out. And again, federal funds, the federal procurement is because of changes to the rules. Specifically, there were changes to micropurchasing and the threshold for micropurchasing. And then disposition of surplus property is because of change in the statute regarding making things available to charge schools the same way you do other schools.
Can I, can I?
Mr. Townsend?
I apologize if I'm sort of trying to follow, 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 follow along, I may have missed you. On the bullet, bullet, bullying one, there's one, this change seems specific to bus stops?
Yes, it says school bus or school bus stops. It's on the first page there. And it just, that was a change in statute that added bus stops.
Okay. And the other one, the, just to note, the, the false accusation slash retaliation language is, that came from Neola or is that?
Is that, yes, that came from Neola.
And that's, and that's, was that to address the statute or is that just something Neola thought was good? I, I'm asking because I think that's pretty reasonable language for all forms of complaints. I'm, I'm curious about, about maybe adopting that or something.
I don't remember what they, why they told me. I can get rid of you later and tell you what.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just, I just think that's, that's potentially some useful, there's useful applications for that language elsewhere as well.
Okay. And then go ahead to the next item, which was our draft legislative priorities. So last year, we had the new funding compression allocation, but it was only in proviso in the budget, it was not in statute. And so we're asking for that to be placed in statute so it will be a recurring source of funds for the district. And then a 3% increase in the BSA and to stop rolling back the ROEs, we can, you know, keep the property tax where it is. Fully funding the cost of SROs at every secondary school and allowing that, the 97.5 million that the legislature added to the Safe Schools allocation was limited to being only used for SROs, and we'd like to be able to pay for the guardians with that money if there's an increase, there's an increase in that pot, which of course, we're going to ask for. We'd like to be able to pay for the guardians with that money also. Number four is the bill we had from last year saying that you cannot use VAM scores for teacher placement decisions. Number five is about the GKE for the teacher certification exams, and it's, it's also from last year where we're asking them to make sure that there are, that there are more passers than basically teachers who don't pass that exam and to revise or cut scores to make sure that that happens and to take a look at the costs. And then equalizing capital funding instead of just asking for the 2.0 back, which we never get and is never on the table. Trying a different tact since so many school districts have items on the ballot for capital outlay funding. And then redirecting the best and brightest funding to make sure that we can put those as recurring salary increases for teachers instead of bonus money.
And this, if you notice, this is still, we have it in draft. So if there are any items that you want us to take a look at adding to this platform, this is how we can do that before we take it out of the draft mode and then ask others to help endorse this and support it as well.
Who has endorsed it?
Ma'am?
Who has endorsed it?
No one, yet, it's still in draft. I said, you don't, Mr. Townsend and Ms. Fields.
Yeah, just a comment, I support all of these. I think this, this is a unique election. There's going to be a new, I mean, there's going to be a lot of turnover. We don't know which way it's going to go exactly, but I think this would be a good year to have a wish list, like, not just, not just things that are in the context of how we've done things, but three or four things that would make a major difference to how we operate, to how our, our, our teachers experience things, our kids experience parents' things. If, if you want to say recalc, calculate how school, school grades are calculated, like, things like that, things that are more fundamental to the model, I would encourage us to have three or four things that we'd love to see, you know, if, if we, if we were starting from scratch, right? And because, you know, we're not, we're not going to be starting from scratch, but there is likely to be a pretty significant change in direction, one way or another, coming out of this, so I would encourage that. And that might also influence the FSBA. Yeah, sure.
Ms. Fields?
How does, how does this list compare to the, to the Coalition's list?
The Coalition has not finalized their list. What they've done is they've asked all the districts to send in theirs, and then the chair is kind of going through and trying to find things of common interest, and they're going to bring that back, I believe, the next meeting?
The dis, well, we don't have a meeting in November because it's Veterans Day, so the December meeting in Tampa.
And so it's not finalized yet. FSBA's platform will be finalized at their November meeting in Tampa. And I know that the 3%, number two, number three, number two and number three for sure, in the best and the brightest are, are on there.
Is this in priority order?
Um, in terms of my priority, yes, but if it's not the board's priority, please tell me, and I will make those changes.
Well, I just think that the, the teacher certification is a big issue, and I think there really needs to be a top priority because there's so many folks that are struggling and having to constantly pay the money when they're not able to pass the exam. But I, to me, I think that's, that's very important. Everything here is important, but I think that that's critical.
Move it up.
Maybe move it up to one of the, to the top three.
Sure.
I think the first two have to be considered our top priority, but maybe make them a meeting. My colleague made this agreement.
Is number three okay with everybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Saj. Next, we have Mr. Perron. And Ms. Perron is coming back because this is a discussion in our last meeting, so he's bringing forward the update information we issued.
Yeah, I was able to get some information rather quickly. It may not be everything that the board asked for, but I just wanted to include this and answer any questions. We attached, one of the questions was what other districts did to procure when using pronos, and I have the list here of the school districts and the government clients that they have and all the ones that they were using or piggybacked from a current contract.
Do you want to hear some of the, what are the large districts that we have?
Broward, Orange, Palm Beach, and then your middle, Osceola, Collier, and Lake.
Those are all the piggybacks to the pronos. So, Mr. Townsend?
Maybe I can just make this simple, and I think this was primarily, I raised these concerns last week, and I've been thinking about this, and I'm probably not going to support this as a co, contract now. And the reason for this is, I think, I absolutely have no doubt at all that we, that we need to improve the function, the time, time, timekeeping. I think too often, not just here, but all over in schools, in schools, particularly vendor interaction is driving function, rather than function driving vendor, vendor interaction. I would love to see us identify the functions that need to improve, go out through strong RFPs or RFI's or RFQs or, you know, whatever the correct process is. I think this contract is going to be so big, once they, you know, this, this is small, but it's, it's the, you know, the trunk on, under the tent. Who knows how, how, how much money this will end up flowing to them? I think there are probably multiple people who would like to compete for that, and we could probably get better deals for it just based, based on competition. But even if we can't, even if this is the best deal that we can do, I think, I personally want to set a precedent of having our functions drive our spending decisions, not what a vendor says they can do for, for us. I would much, 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 much rather us identify the things that aren't working well and fix them that, that, that way. This may well be the, the exact right thing to do. This, this may be the best deal. This is more a question of principle for, for me and trying to set a, a standard of how we do, do these things moving ahead. So I appreciate the effort. I don't, I don't want you to go kill yourself further on this. I'm probably not going to support this, but there may be, there may be, well, well be votes to do it.
Mr. Wilson?
And Mr. Townsend, words have a good question. Could you do an RFQ on this or is an RFP required?
No, I think because it's software, we could do the RFQ just like a, like.
So, you know, and I'm very sensitive to the RFP process. It's, it's extremely time consuming and, I mean, time consuming, and you know all the iterations that you go through of that. But maybe in response to Mr. Townsend's concerns, moving forward, not necessarily the process issue, but moving forward, maybe we can consider a, maybe a beat up RFQ process. And.
But, I mean, look, look at the, look at the thing we've just gone through with the, I'm sorry, can I, that, were you about to say something?
I was. I was going to ask a question to Mr. Bridges and Mr. Perron. Has the other districts already gone through the RFP with the pronos on those?
Yeah, when we.
Since they're piggybacking on that?
We use the term, we use the term piggyback to mean when another district has gone through the legal process that is required by statute, and, and it varies from acquisition to acquisition. Some of them can be done, some, the, the prescribed process is an RFQ, others require a full-blown RFQ. But when you, when you piggyback, what you're doing is writing the contract that some other district has already gone through the, the required fully competitive process to get to. So it's not a restriction or an abridgement of competition, and that, that's the, the important thing. It's not an end around on competition. It, it, it presupposes that whatever contract we are looking to ride was developed through a fully competitive process.
I just wanted to make sure we.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that discussion was held last time as well, and I want to make sure everyone was clear on it because the other counties have already gone through the process, and we're going to go through a process as well, is what we're hoping.
Ms. Saj and Mr. Townsend?
Well, one of the strengths, while I understand you certainly don't want to just do a deal to favor one company over another, but the strength of looking at something that somebody else has already gone through, you call these, because I know I've done that in the past, you call your counterparts and you find out how it's working in their district. You can do an RFQ or an RFQ, but you still want to have a strong group of known entities that are using it and have had success with it. Because I've also experienced, companies can come in and promise you lots of things you really want to see it working. So a lot of times, for me, this is more valid than a company telling you they can do it, is that you can go out and you can call people and find out how it's working in their district. And these are some large districts. So that process, to me, gives you a more authentic feel for how it's going to work and what they can do. So it's a balance, but no matter who, no matter what process you use, you still want to get confirmation from other known entities about how it's working for them and how they've used it.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, specific to this, if I remember the discussion correctly, Mesa, Arizona was the government agency that we were basing, that other people had bases on, had kind of bounced around to us through that, and I thought we were going to get the, the, their readout for this. I don't see that, but it probably wouldn't have made a difference, so, I mean, I don't, don't go chase that down now. I mean.
The, the, the choice, our original choice was the one you see throughout is the US communities, but that, as we stated, was the one that is ending in February. These folks got onto that when it was, there was much more time on it, so we, you know, that was the one we were looking at, but then we did find the Mesa or.
Yeah, I, we don't need to belabor this, but my, my concern is that the vendor is driving the contract, not the function. And I'm, and again, I understand, Pete, this is how this works. I mean, I'm, I'm fine, fine with it. Problem is, we've had some problems with that here, and the public needs to know we're taking that seriously. I, you know, I, I'm not a purchasing expert. I don't know what competitive processes we can put in place short of a super formal RFQ that takes 10 years to do. I, you know, I'm, I'm open to, to, to any of that. I think this is me saying I want us to do these kinds of things differently in the future, and I'm open to working with anybody on how, on, on, on how, how, on how that works, but, you know, we, we don't see what the actual competitive process was for Mesa. Like, I thought we were going to actually see that this, this week, but we don't. And so that's, 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 that's kind of where I, I am on it, because this is a, this is going to be a big contract. They are, they are going to be our provider across the district. This is probably going to be, what, $10 million eventually, 20? I mean, I mean, if, depending on how, it's, I mean, this is a lot of money.
How long we.
Right, right. So I, that's, 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 that's my feeling. So I'll, I'll stop there, just, just wanted to let you know.
Ms. Fields?
What is the proposed term of the contract? The end of this contract, but then what is the proposed term?
Is it the Mesa one?
Yep.
How long that goes?
Mesa one is in, the effective date is through February of 2023, and then there's a couple of renewals available after that, two additional one-year renewals. But this initial contract award is through February 28th of 2023.
So it's like a five-year contract?
Four and a half.
Four and a half, five. So is there any way to modify the term as far as years, is there any way to say that we can go back and look at it?
Wes has educated me on this. You accept the terms of the contract.
Yes, I, there have been districts that have done that where there's been a, a contract in place somewhere else that was, that only had six months left on the term, and the district would go and, and adopt that as a piggyback contract and try to extend it out for years beyond that. I, I do not believe that is, is appropriate or proper or legal for that matter, and I think that if an auditor looked at it, the auditor would, would find that inappropriate, and it would result in a finding, because I, I believe that you, you can only piggyback on that which exists, and when the underlying contract ends, whatever you got has no, has no further basis. So I think it's important to make sure that anytime we piggyback a contract, the term of the contract that we enter into with that vendor does not exceed the term with the underlying contract in the district where we're, where we're looking to ride.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Townsend?
Can I, can I, one other quick point about competition, like, on the, in the health insurance process we just went through, when, you know, two, two things, you know, we, we ended up being able to widen the pharmacy availability, right? That's the, and that, apparently somebody was able to compete and say, oh, we could do, could do, could do that. And, and then we saw, saw publics come in and say, hey, we'd like to compete for this. You know, I, again, if we can find mechanisms that hold these contracts against each other, have, have these, these vendors strive for our taxpayers' money, I, I think we're liable to get better outcomes. And that's, that's, that's my, that's my, my other point, I would, I would make, so. I'll, I'm good.
And to be clear, I'm going to support this, this contract, but I think that's a point well made, and it's not just about ensuring that we, we get the most bang for our buck. I mean, certainly is incredibly important, but it's also about transparency and folks feeling comfortable, you know, that we're, we're doing everything we can to manage our taxpayer, tax dollars as best possible. So I don't, I don't want to unduly burden the district, and I know RFQs can be incredibly burdensome, but if we could find a, you know, another solution where we, there's some sort of competitive process, I would agree with that. I think that could be helpful to us.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I don't think anything wrong here. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, this is just a.
Ms. Saj?
And I just, I do plan to support this, but I, in the future, when you're bringing things like this, if you could bring to us also, these are the districts that are currently using it, and this is, they did an RFQ or they, just so that we know from the beginning, I think we all, we can see six districts around us just did an RFQ, and they all came to the same conclusion, why are we going to rein the wheel? But if we could have that information upfront, it would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Perron, you have the midterm as well?
Yes. I also have Mr. Mike Wieners here from Holland and Knight, if you have any legal questions after we go through. So we're talking about the 2015 swap that we entered into, a three-year deal back in 2015, a few months ago, one or two months ago, the bank, Bank of America, approached, approached us and asked if we wanted to amend and do a one, two, or a three-year extension. We accepted the one-year extension, which is what you have in front of you. We plan within that year to do a, go out and do an RFQ and include or bring in other banks to get, as we just talked about, to get some competition. So we will do that, we have a year to do that, and so that's where we are. Again, Mr. Wieners here, if you have any legal. These are, these are a little more intricate deals when you're dealing with swaps, so there's, there's some stuff that goes behind the scenes on this.
So, and we're voting on this this evening?
Yes.
And exactly what is it that you're asking, Mr. Perron?
It's an amendment to the 2015 because it ends on, or we have to have that done by November 1st and enter into that.
Yeah, so there's really two things that the amendment does. One is to extend the term for a year, and then as part of the extension, there was a change in the tax law, as we're all aware of, effective January 1st, that resulted in an increase in the interest rate on this loan. And so as part of the extension, the bank is adjusting that rate for the one-year term. So it's a shorter term than the initial term was. The, the first deal was a three-year term, this one is a one-year term, so they adjusted the spread and the percentage of LIBOR that you're paying on it. So it's those two factors that change.
Ms. Saj?
And the interest is going to be 5.7%? Yeah, it's not in, and here it says as delegated herein, but I thought I read in the.
Yeah, so the way that this is going to work is it's a variable rate on the bank loan, and you have a swap which effectively cancels out the variable rate portion, so you're receiving a variable rate and you're paying a variable rate. And then under the swap, you're paying a fixed rate, so the fixed rate is the portion that's going to be priced when we get closer to it, because what they'll do is they typically won't price the swap until the day of you agreeing to enter into it. So, and then they'll lock that rate in. It's the way the swaps work. It's a little bit different than when we do bonds, and we have a little bit longer lead time.
What was the interest rate that was in the paper? This says that as delegated herein, but I thought I read a specific interest rate in the ones that are tonight.
So in tonight, what we've done is to provide in the resolution the interest rate in which the certificates, the, the debt obligation that you're doing with B of A, because that one, we know the bank's locked into that, so we were able to define that.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, that was it with, okay.
Sure, and then we're going to, once we know the fixed rate on the swap. Sure. And then, we're going to, once we know the fixed rate on the swap, that's the one that we, we didn't have available because we can't have that yet. And then we'll, that's what's delegated by the board.
And when, what day will that be on?
30th.
We're voting tonight, so it'll be tomorrow.
Is there, I know the 30th we want to close on?
The 30th is when we'll close on the bank loan, because we want to extend that, because that has a tender, a soft put date of November 1st. So, we'll close on that on October 30th for the one-year extension. And then, the swap, we have a little bit of time on that. We want to do that before the, before December 1st, when your new rate really kicks in. And so, we'll price that probably, I haven't talked to Mike about it, but probably within a week of the 30th, either a few days before or a few days after.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd just like to acknowledge this is an exceedingly complex area of the law. You, anytime you have tax law and financial law running, running into each other, it gets complicated in a hurry. And I just wanted to acknowledge the, the unbelievable level of service that we have received from Mike Weiner of Holland and Knight. I have never seen anybody move so fast and do such, such sophisticated transactions. It has been amazing to watch. So.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson?
What is the likelihood that we're going to see interest rates continue to go up over time as relates to these swaps?
Oh, there's the $90 question.
I can't predict it. I have no idea.
I mean, is it going to follow the same trend as, as what we're seeing happening in the economy?
You're pricing it off of LIBOR, and the LIBOR has been trending up.
Trending up.
Right.
Which I suspect will, will see. So, I just have one other comment, Mr. Bridges. I noticed that in the corporate resolution, president, is that the term president is identified? Actually, it requires a president's signature.
Yes.
But we don't define president in the board resolution. It's not discussed anywhere. So, I would, I would suggest we include a definition of president in the board resolution.
We can do that.
And, and probably, my suggestion would be that the board chair and board president and president be the same.
Sure. We, we, we have traditionally done it that way, but we can, we can certainly address that.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't, I don't want us to have a tech, I don't want us to be a technical default because somebody signed something and it wasn't defined.
And, and I would also acknowledge, Mr. Wilson noticed that the, that the, the articles of the, of the corporation, the corporation had not been, had not been updated. It turned out they'd been sent, the, the State Department had been sending notices to Penny Zirker, who had departed the, the district some time ago.
Yeah.
But, but we, we caught that and, and updated that. That is all correct.
Well, and thank you. And I want to be, I want to be fair about that. Actually, one of the candidates caught that and, and asked me about what exactly was that, and was, just had some questions about it, and, and suggested it could be a problem. So, I went to the side and caught that, and that's what I.
Yeah, it was, it was a good catch. That's something that had traditionally been done. Penny Zirker had, had done that as a transactional matter for several years. And, and when she departed, that was not, was not updated. So, it had just been, the notices had been sent out. They'd just gone into the ether, and we now have that, we now have that prepared.
Mr. Towns?
At the risk of really sounding stupid, can someone take three minutes and, and explain this, the, the corporation's relationship to us? Like, this is a thing that I'm not sure I've, ever comprehended before. What, what are, what, what, what exactly is going on here in English?
Yeah.
Let's all look at each other.
I'm looking at Wes. I'm happy to take it if, if everyone's taking a step back. It, so, under Florida law, school boards can't, under Florida law, any government entity is required to have a referendum vote in order to pledge its advocatary taxes. Most school districts, the majority of your available revenues are advocatary taxes. And so, the Supreme Court has ruled that if a entity like a school board enters into a one-year lease, and that lease is subject to appropriation, and at the end of that one-year lease, the school board can decide not to appropriate and to walk away from that lease, that it hasn't pledged its advocatary taxes. And therefore, you don't need a referendum. So, what the school districts have done is to set these up as lease obligations when you do your financings. That's why you do a certificate of participation, where you set up a corporation that you're leasing your land to, and then you lease it back to yourself. And at the end of each year, you get to decide to appropriate or not. If you don't appropriate, then you walk away from your school building during that time that you've financed it for that period. And the idea is that most school districts are going to continue to make their lease payments because they need to have their school operations. And that's why they, they are able to get the credit ratings that they have, but it's why we've had to structure it as a corporation as opposed to just doing a direct debt obligation.
So, what you, so the word pledge, in what you discuss, that means in, in terms of like, like to the bond or the debt or whatever? Is that the pledge to pay off the debt?
Pledge to the, pay the debt.
Right. Hey, thank you. That's very, very help, helpful. Good appreciate it.
So, when you are elected, you're also automatically assigned to this financing corporation board?
Especially shell company.
Yeah, when we, when we do these.
I've never been on a shell company before.
Yeah, when we, when we do these, you'll, you'll see the, the, the school board will, will recess and reconvene as the corporation do the corporation's business, then close, close that meeting and reconvene the school board to do the school board's business.
Fair enough.
Sometimes you'll see documents that are substantially similar, they're executed by both them.
Thank you.
You think it's also inefficient in law?
Yeah. The, the, the tax code is not a bad efficiency.
The next item that is coming before you will be the Florida PISA Act, and Mr. Davis, and I think I saw Mike Wiggins here, because this deals with our school safety assessment. There's no attachments, and I dare want to explain it to you. This is something that comes before you annually as well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll let Mr. Wiggins speak to this, as they have done all the background work and disturb any.
Good afternoon. The Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act requires the district to complete a school security risk assessment for each school in a district and a district assessment. And that assessment is the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool. It's an online tool, basically, different departments within the district. I email a portion of this assessment to them, and they respond back. And there's questions based on what's considered to be the best practice related to each of those areas. And at the conclusion, the district school safety specialist is to provide recommendations to the board regarding the outcome of that assessment. So, there's a few mandates within the Senate Bill 7026, which really don't give us much option, but we have to comply with, that overall, the district basically performs best practices overall. There's a few in progress, and those are the new mandates based on Senate Bill 7026. Among those are provide necessary training and resources to students and, and district staff in matters related to youth mental health awareness and assistance. We have to coordinate with emergency responders to conduct a tour of every campus in the district, to provide safety recommendations. We have to establish threat assessment teams at each school that coordinate resources and assessment and intervention with individuals whose behavior may pose a threat to the safety of the school staff or students, consistent with models and policies developed by the Office of Safe Schools. We have to implement a student crime watch program to promote responsibility among students and improve school safety. Those are new mandates within Senate Bill 7026, where when we've done the assessment, we show it's in progress. Basically, basically, we're doing best practice with the exception of those three, because they're new. And then, the other recommendation would be to continue to upgrade surveillance equipment and install surveillance at educational facilities that do not have a system in place. Continue to install fencing and develop Singaporean access at all educational facilities in the district, and to obtain emergency checklists for our classrooms in the district. Those three, we've always been working toward. We continue to upgrade and, and do campus hardening, and that's basically what those three fall, fall into that category. But overall, I think the district is, is doing well. We're still moving forward with the physical improvements that we need to do to provide that safety for all our students and staff.
This document is available to any of the board members at the Safe Schools Office or the Department of School Securities Office and Support Services. So, you can see exactly what the assessment is and what questions are being asked.
Is it a confidential document?
It is a, I'm sorry, thank you. It is a confidential document that is, that is, is protected under.
119.
Yeah.
So, say, say, it's classified, it's for official use only, it's, it's a part of the safety plan and protected under statute 119 as part of the district's safety plan. So, it's not subject to public record release.
Mr. Towns?
Just a quick clarification. So, the present, like, when you're talking about things that have been recommended, or is that, is there someone from the state looking at our report and saying, do, like, are, are you essentially reporting like an auditor's finding here, or, or is this our own finding of ourselves? What?
It's both. It is for us to look at how we're doing internally, and this report is submitted to the Florida Department of Education. Part of it is, you know, for grant funding, we have to accomplish certain things for grant funding, and that falls into completing an assessment for each school. You have to do that in order to be eligible for grant funding. So, they will look at it and review the district as a whole when we do the best practice. But basically, it's a tool for us to use internally to see where our shortcomings might be.
But currently, we've submitted what we're supposed to submit. We're, we're fully compliant with submitting.
With the, the assessments for each school was due in August, which has been completed.
Okay.
And the, this district assessment is due August 31st, following this meeting. So.
August? Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's two. There's one for each school and then the overall district. So, the school assessments for every school in the district has been submitted.
Right.
As required, this district assessment is due at the end of this month.
Okay. So, have we?
It's complete. I just need to submit it.
Is the state commenting back at us yet, or is it just sitting up there for?
No, they're not. They have not. Other than we received your assessment, you're done, you've checked that box. No, that's all we received.
Okay, thanks.
So, what can see in here?
I'm sorry.
Got any questions on that?
Okay. Thank you. The next item we have before you will be kind of a joint between three of us, doing a top school presentation. Each year, when you have schools of new law, requires that any school that is going to be recommended and is going to an external operator or closure or charter, we have to bring before you a recommendation, which we then in turn notify the state board, or notify the commissioner by November the 1st of our recommendation at this time that we're going to recommend. The two schools that are being brought before you today, which you're going to hear about, is going to be McLaughlin and Caldwell. So, we're going to start off, Dr. Yates is going, I believe, start off with the data points for the schools. And then, Ms. Barnes will talk to you about the new selection process, which the state board just adopted, I think this summer. And then, I'll come back and tell you about the internal operator.
Good afternoon. Today, we're here to talk about two schools that are in the process of working in turnaround. The first school we need to talk about is Walter Caldwell. As y'all are aware, Walter Caldwell has been working hard to improve the student academics at his school. Ms. Hill is in the second year of her principalship there. One of the things that you can see right off the bat, that the staff, just by this right here, with the LA Achievement, Learning Games, and Lewis Cortow, they worked very hard on improving reading last year. This year, they're really focusing both on reading and math. I'm, I'm very proud of the efforts that the staff has put in down there, and I'm very confident that this school will turn around. But at this point, they are at the stage within the turnaround process where we would have to submit a top plan with a particular selected choice. The second school that is in this same situation, or same cycle, if you will, within school turnaround is McLaughlin. Like Walter Caldwell, McLaughlin has, Donna Driscoll is in her second year as principal there. I cannot tell you how proud I am of the work the staff has put in there. There's been some sweat equity down there with this, this school, with the administration, the staff, countless hours with them. They're working very hard to turn this school around. They improved it from an F to a D this past year. Both schools are only three points away from a C. Very, very confident, again, with the work and the assistance they've put into place, that this school will improve. But again, with both schools, the staff has been totally committed to working with these schools, and I'm very confident they will turn around.
Good afternoon. Some of the changes that we brought about was, in the assurance piece, we now need to make sure that we are agreeing to and put into the plan exactly what we're going to do. So, we will be checking box one for assurance, stating that we will select an external operator company that has a proven track record. I cannot speak for Ms. Byrd. I mean, know that the company that we have in place now has really done an excellent job for us in terms of the fact that last year, we actually had 14 schools on, like, we had 14 schools on plans, but nine working with the company. And all of those schools moved. And so, we were really proud of that. This year, we only have two schools that are actually on continuation plans from last year that are with the district. And then, we had the two from the external operators. So, we only have four, which we're really excited about. We will be checking box number two, stating the leadership. The administration knows at the school that in the event, we're hoping that that's not going to be the case, but in the event that the school did not, at both sites, turn around, we have to look at leadership. Before, they kind of gave the district and the superintendent an opportunity to fight, if you will, on behalf of the leadership team. It's now in their new plan that at two years, if you've been there two years, that's it. And so, we'd have to have some extenuating circumstances to offset that. Now, going from an F to three percentage points below a C might be a very good argument, or even 1%. But we will agree to that, and the administration and leadership teams at those schools are aware. Under assurance three for instructional staff, we've already ensured that none of those schools have unsat VAM teachers there. And we've been doing that for the last two years. We may have them, an unsat teacher in a non-core area that's below the district average, but not in core, which is what's required. So, we're well ahead of the game there, so there wouldn't be any changes. We will then go to assurance number four, which is our collaboration with the MOU and the union. And I want to publicly say that we've had a great collaboration process with Ms. Mary and Capizello and Tetra with the HR department. We've had every MOU that we needed to support those schools in place and ready to go on time. And so, I thank them for that. So, we're ahead of the game there. We're just going to ensure that we continue on with that process. So, our assurances are good.
So, next you have a four years, the selection process for those two schools. Under there, you see where it says DMP, District Managed Turnaround, which is what they're currently in right now. That's why we braid that box out. You cannot go back to a district managed turnaround. At this point in the year, they want to know what's your next selection of an option. The RE stands for reassign students to another school and monitor their progress. That means you have to sign into a school that's C or higher, and you have to monitor them for two years and report that back to DOE. If they move, you have to, you have to find them, locate them, monitor them, monitor the teacher that they're sitting in, and report it to DOE. The next option, you see where it says CH, which is, is charter s- The next option, you see where it says CH, which is Charter School, where you close the school and reopen the school as one or more charters with the governing board that has a demonstrated track record of effectiveness. What they're looking for, does that charter have a demonstrated track record of working with low-performing schools and turning them around? The last one, which we're currently in, it was a couple of schools now, which is my recommendation before this board today, is to contract with the external operator. As you know, we have an external operator that has now been approved by the State Board of Education to be an external operator within the state, and they have to have a proven track record, which they do. They've been on the ground, working, yes, this company has been here, I believe in 2015, they've been on the ground when we had 50-plus DNF students, and they've worked in various counties, but yes, they were in Duval County prior to coming here, and they worked there when they actually had closed schools, was on the docket as well. But they've been here on the ground, their work has proven what they're doing in these schools by moving them forward. They're working in two other counties, I'm aware of this year, with schools as well. So that's our recommendation. Again, some of the highlights, when looking at a company, I wanted to look at a company that if the schools make the letter grade of A/C, will they allow us to cut back out of the contract? This company still holds true to that. I believe you can see where they did that this year with the schools, when they made the C, they were not external operator, where we were locked into the price for the external operator at that point. However, the state does say, even if they make the C, you have to provide a level of support. The level of support that we have designed with them is one that we can design what that school needs. So basically, we tailor it to the needs of the school with the principal, what they need at that point. That range for looking at the school, that if they enter the external operator for the first year is 325, and then if they just need a level of support, we've gone down to as low as 70,000, just providing support to a school. They're, again, they're willing to let us out of the contract, but being the support, they're not in the business of wanting to run schools and have a school district themselves. So that's their highlights, which is the same continuation which we're currently under. I believe, is that the last slide? That's the last slide. Again, educational directions is my recommendation for McLaughlin and Caldwell. This point, which we will turn that information in to DOE this week, is due November 1st, and you will have that come before you this afternoon at the board. Any questions? Ms. Cunningham?
Do you have a copy of that? It's not in my backup, so I don't know if everybody else has.
No.
Okay. Is there any way to get us a copy of that?
We can send it to you.
Could you please?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. And I have another question. Well, I have the floor. So we talked about several different things, and I know that the Lake Wales Charter Group has requested that we look at due to the finances, and I would need to review that because I can't see those numbers from here, to see if financially, if it would maybe make sense to go the direction of allowing a proven charter, which is in Lake Wales, to take over if that, if it comes to that. Has there been any discussion or any evaluation of the cost differential based on the donors that have come forward to infuse money into the school? It might not cost the district. That's why I'm asking, where are we on evaluating, evaluating the Lake Wales Charter Systems proposal for McLaughlin?
Could I, could I address that?
Sure.
Mr. Wilson? So we've been meeting, and Mr. Hill and I met with them last time, they fully expect that we will, it is anticipated that the recommendation would be for Educational Directions, they expect that to happen. But what they're asking for is, and they, Mr. Nelson contacted me yesterday, they would like to propose a contract that specifically indicates that no students will be shipped out of Lake Wales, and that every student in Lake Wales' zone area, as now defined, would be accepted into their charter school system under this proposal. In addition to that, they would, they would stipulate in writing in a contract that they would not bring students in from any other, any other area. So those, they're willing to put that in writing in a contract in exchange for, as I think Ms. Cunningham is suggesting, the board turning McLaughlin over to them. What they're specifically asking for, though, they understand that Educational Directions would be, would be recommended, and they anticipate it being approved tonight, but that, that contract, that be amended at some time in the future, preferably sometime next year, I'm guessing, early next year, because there are a lot of details to be worked out, if that should happen, if it should even get to that point. And I, I know I'm running on just a little bit, but if you'll bear with me. I wanted, and Mr. Hill will verify this because he was at that meeting, we made it abundantly clear that until such time as the board, if the board chooses to turn McLaughlin over, that it is the superintendent's responsibility to do everything within her power to provide the resources and to make McLaughlin the best possible school, and they're in agreement with that as well. But, so that's where, that's kind of where we are with it, and then I have some comments I'd like to add, too.
Yeah, okay. And I knew everything you've already said because I've been in contact with them as well, meeting with different members of the Board of Trustees, so I understand that. So what, what we're saying really, and the tenant zones is a whole nother issue for, between Lake Wales and the box piece, but, so we are saying right now that there's been no discussion with our cabinet leadership and the trustees to move forward with their proposal. We're just accepting educational directives for right now, and that if need be, is there a clause in the educational directions people to be able to change this contract in the future? What is, what is written in? Because I don't know.
You can go ahead.
Guys, we've looked at this still with the charter school, and I can only give you my, Ms. Bridges, I can only give you my cursory glance at what's going on with it, okay?
Sure.
Okay. So when we looked at it from a legal standpoint, what I understand is that there would be, in essence, maybe three possible ways that McLaughlin could become a charter school, all right? The first way, which is what you're kind of proposing, is that we would turn McLaughlin over under a contract to a, to a charter school provider that has a proven track record. Ms. Bridges, when you looked at that, what did you determine?
So, so if you look at what the DA requirements are under assurances for the charter school option, it talks about selected charter organization that has a record of school improvement in turning around schools. So we have, we have, some of the Lake Wales charter schools have been very successful. Box Academy has certainly been successful. We have others that have either remained flat or gone up and down by about a letter grade. So just comparing that a little bit to what happened in Jefferson, the Jefferson School District, which I worked with when they were going through their whole charter school process, they did an RFP, and they specifically looked at charter school organizations or management companies that had a track record of turnaround schools with similar populations that had somewhere between 53 and 66% of the, of the schools that were at an ARV and had knew those schools or those populations. So that's, that's sort of the only standard we have at the moment because they're the only district I'm aware of that's done that.
And might I add, there are three options that the state has outlined, the three that I just went over. Those are the three options they're looking at. We will still have to, even if the board wants to have that conversation about charter, it has to go before the state board.
Okay.
It still goes back before the state board for...
All right. Let me re-ask my question, so you don't have to spend a lot of time, because I can ask you this outside of here. My question simply is, if we sign the contract and we approve it tonight with educational directives, is there any way to get out of it if we choose to go a different path by the time the letter grades come out? That is my question.
Can I, can I answer that?
Yeah, anybody.
Not sign the contract tonight, what we're voting on is a recommendation to move forward, my recommendation to the state board. By November 1, there has to be a selection of the three options.
Selection only. But you will not...
And we're notifying them now. We have a contract within there that we can go back, and the way our contract is currently written...
Okay.
It gives us the flexibility to move in and out.
As needed.
But, and then we have to send that contract once the state board in January asks for it, for them to have approval on that as well.
Okay, that's it. I don't want to spend the whole day. Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Just one quick question. If, if, if Lake Wales Charter as an entity wanted to do what Educational Directions is doing as an entity, are they qualified to do that? Like, right, they're not certified to do what ED does. So, so the problem here, is the difference between a charter school not having, charter schools aren't in the compulsory education business, we are, and that's what the, I mean, there, you could make a case for having the Lake Wales Charter version of ED come in, that might be a good, but they're, but they're not qualified to do it, right? That's, that's the, and that's the problem we're going to have to work, to work out. I, I, I mean, to Lori's point, I mean, I think these are workoutable problems, I think they're moving, moving in the right direction on it, but hopefully, we'll be able to have this discussion without a gun to our head, anybody from the state, or, and again, the election coming, coming up and the change of direction, all of this may be...
Different.
Totally different, like the pressure on it, so, you know, it's...
What I would like, what I would like to let the board know, both of these schools are three points away, you know, two years have shown they are moving. We're putting the resources in there to get them to move to the letter grade of C. So, you know, we've talked to teachers, we've assured them, we're putting the support out there for the teachers, we're making sure that we are committed to the teachers and the students in that building by giving them the support they need at this point to get them over threshold. Ms. Self, does that...
Oh, no. Sorry.
Mr. Wilson?
Mrs. Fields.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fields.
I don't know who can answer this question, but is there an approved charter school list? And if it is, who maintains that list to show that they are qualified?
Me, Charlie.
Because they need credentials to turn around the school. Who, who are they?
Carolyn actually, I believe Carolyn has the list because of the charter, and she was part of that one when they were with Jefferson County, the ones that they approved.
They don't, they don't, so there's not a, there's not a list. There's not a list that says Somerset is on the list and XYZ is off the list. That's why Jefferson County went through an RFP process, so that they could evaluate those proposals. But, so the only thing we have for guidance in that is the requirements as they're set out in the DA document where it talks about proven success record with turnaround. So that's, that's sort of the standard.
The other thing that I would, would suggest as we get ready to transition over into another year, is that it would really be a good thing, I think, for you all to do a very in-depth session with the board on charter schools and how it works. And if, if we were to convert McLaughlin to a conversion charter school, how all that works and the process and stuff, I think it should, it would just be good for everybody to kind of be reminded, and for those that might be new, just informed.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to make, I mean, I think there's a little bit of conflation. They're, they're sort of two different things. One is keeping McLaughlin a zone school and then hiring, what is, what is the term for what Educational Direction is?
External operator.
An external operator. Lake Wales Charter, take Charter out of the name, call it Lake Wales External Operator, does not exist, right? They couldn't be an external operator. When you convert the school to a charter, you're changing a whole bunch of things. You're, you're, you're changing the underlying structure of who goes where. Like, the simplest solution to a lot of this might be, and it doesn't exist, so it doesn't really matter, if Lake Wales Charter was some sort of external operator qualified to be one. And to Ms. Fields is quite a question about who's qualified as charters, is there a list of external operators that's qualified?
The State Board of Education approves those.
They have approved them. There's only a handful that were approved the first year. There's about five that actually got approved in Education Direction, was one of the top ones that they approved with that. That's all that's out there now. I do want to say, because I've heard conversion, and I want to make sure that, one, that the language in the state board does not call for conversion, it just says charter only. Conversion is where staff takes a vote and parents take a vote. So I don't want to get that muddy with anyone, because I, I hear both sides of it, but that's not what the State Board of Education is calling for, for conversion. Mr. Wilson?
Just a few comments. I, first of all, I agree with Mrs. Fields, we need some discussion and better understanding of what it might entail if, if, for example, the board were to consider not converting, but moving McLaughlin to the Lake Wales Charter School System. So that's why I think it's important that we, we go with the superintendent's recommendation this time, just my thoughts. But I would offer this, I want to make it abundantly clear, and again, Mr. Hill was there, our, our staff, our superintendent, and their folks understand the importance of us emphasizing that, that this district is going to be fully supportive of McLaughlin in making that school the best school it can be, until such time in the future, should it occur that the board chooses to do something else. But I have some thoughts about that, I'd like to share those thoughts. The McLaughlin Middle School is a battleground. It was not a war started by this school district, it was not a war started by the Lake Wales Charter School District, in my opinion, it's much like two parents splitting, and both of them feel like they know what's best for their children, and they're both trying to do the best thing they can for their children, but in the meantime, the kids there are caught in the middle of this battle. And I, I think at some point in time, we need to have a real, true, serious discussion about that, and how do we do the right thing for the kids in that school district, and take the parents and the, and the teachers and everybody else out of play, because it's the kids who are suffering, and that's what concerns me most. So those are my thoughts, and I hope that, you know, sometime down the road, we can figure out a way to have some more discussions about that. Thank you.
I appreciate you continuing the talks on this, I mean, I think the more we talk, we talk about it, the better over time, and it doesn't need to be bound up in this turnaround aspect, like, in fact, it's probably better if it's not, like, if we're coming up with that equitable solution outside of this, but I just, it's good, thank you.
Again, I think the staff at McLaughlin, the leadership, they're doing an unbelievable job, they're really working hard every day. I have full faith in them that they're going to turn it around. This will be just in case, and we've got a proven track record with this company that they would work with us.
Thank you, Laura. The, you have two informational items, which are regular items that come before you. Are there any questions on item seven and eight, it starts in the quarterly report?
Yes.
Okay, well, no questions, we're going to take a short break, and then we will turn it back over to Mr. Wilson. Take a 10-minute break?
Take a break?
Sure.
Okay, we ready to get started, please? Mrs. Fields. We'll wait on Mrs. Fields another minute or two. While we're waiting on Mrs. Fields, we do have one item for the board members. Which one is that? Item C15, bid recommendations. That item's being pulled to pull the Cronos piece out. It's a package, and they're going to repackage that and bring that, bring the Cronos item back as a regular agenda item. They're working on that. And I guess we could go through the agenda, and then when Mrs. Fields gets back and she has any questions, we can, we can answer her questions at that time. So are there any, any questions about, well, first of all, we have some minutes, we have several sets of minutes. Any questions or comments about minutes? All right, so I do have one. This is the minutes of the September 4th work session. Under number two, it's, it says 3 billion, I think it should, I think it should be 3 million. This is under, let me go back. This is the work session, minutes of 9:04, under number two, Business Services. On the first line, it says, based on the certified Polk County tax rolls, the district received a 3 billion increase.
I wish.
Where, whose drawer is that in? Where, whose drawer is that in?
Is that right?
Is it correct? A three billion increase?
From the. Yes. Run up from thirty-five to thirty-eight billion.
Okay, very good, thank you.
The tax level, we didn't receive.
I mean, take a mill in Trump.
I mean, is it phrased, is it phrased that way though?
No, it did, it just, but it said the district received, so it is kind of, it's worded that we received.
It changes the district's tax base.
Tax base increased from.
Increased by three, three dollars.
The tax rolls received a three billion dollar increase. The words, the district.
Is that a difficult change to effect?
Yeah, this one.
I don't want to create any headaches for anybody, I think, are we okay with it?
I would have that changed.
Take the district out of it. The words, the two words, the district.
And then, also, on the minutes of September 18th, the special school board meeting, I talked about PICO funds, and it, I'm quoted in there, it's talking about TECO funds. I don't want us to confuse.
P. P instead of T.
Yeah. They're not TECO funds, it's only TECO, it's PICO, so, let me see if I can find that one. It was under my comments. Page, page five, all the way to the bottom. Okay? Any other questions or comments about the minutes? We have new administrators, item C-15, we're pulling the Cronos out of there and putting that on the regular agenda, so, any questions about item C-16 through C-12? C-16 through C-12. Any questions about any of the cash donations? And again, you know, we're so very grateful to all of our community partners for these contributions, it's just remarkable, actually. I thought, I thought that 7-Elevens were quite, quite creative, and they gave us seven hundred and eleven dollars. And then we got a very generous donation from Tracy and Corinda McGrady for Albertdale High School, we want to recognize that. Any other questions about the cash donations? Non-cash donations, C-52, C-53?
Just a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, what an awesome gift to give nine hundred and thirty-five books to one of our media centers, that is just amazing, so, they need to be recognized for that as well.
Absolutely. Item C-54 through item C-59, questions, comments? Item C-60 through C-63? Item E-64 through R-70, actually, R through, through R-71, let's finish it up, just a minute.
On the Navigator contract, I guess I'll ask, I was just, it still was uncomfortable after they wanted to change the address, it still sounds like they could come and change the address, they have to submit it in writing, but it looks like we would probably have to accept it, and I just don't, I don't know if there's any more teeth you can put in the contract or not.
So there's, there's a lovely standard contract that we have to deal with, but they would have to come to us for approval on that, they couldn't just notify us.
Right.
We would have to, we would have to go through that process, but I think, I think there's a provision in the law that says, if, if something happens, let's say the, the building is no longer suitable for use for students, you have to have a way for them to come to us and say, there's a health emergency, or we are expanding and there's not room, or, so, the teeth that are there are from the standard contract language, we can't put, I mean, we could put in that language, they would have the right to appeal the contract then to the state, because we're going outside of the contract language that the, the state has provided for us, so, tie it up as much as we could, we can go back and ask the board.
Well, if, if it could just make, I mean, I understand if, something, because the Davenport area is where this board really wants that school, and I could understand if they changed within the Davenport, but they've already tried to change to Lakeland Highlands, what if they wait, we approve it, and then it says that we will be reasonable and will not deny them, then they could come back in six months and say, oh, we've decided we want to be in Lakeland Highlands after all, that's the part that, is there any teeth, I understand if something happened in the Davenport and they found a different address.
Well, and I think that could be our definition of, I would take the position that would be our definition of reasonable, that we would negotiate that, that a reasonable location would be, site A didn't work out, so two doors down, there's site B.
In that region, is there any way to put that into the contract that a reasonable, you know, staying in the same area versus southwest? I mean, to me, that's very unreasonable.
Here's what I will commit to you, we'll go back and we'll talk to Navigator, and we'll see if they will agree, I mean, if there's, if there's no dispute, then we're happy to move that forward, we'll have to pull it, though, it is on the board meeting for tonight for approval, we can try and get ahold of them this afternoon, because of course, they're trying to finish up and get their site agreed to and, and move forward on that, if we can get ahold of them and they agree to something like that, on the condition that we can make that change, we can, we'll give you an update just as soon as we have one.
Okay, and I guess we'll go with it if you can, I just don't want to see them do that to the district.
I think we're all concerned about that, that's why we put as much specificity into the address and put the language back in that talks about you can't just.
Announce, yeah.
And announce, you have to have a reasonable expectation of, of agreement.
And a reasonable would be to stay in the northeast area somewhere, to me, okay.
And if, if we did reach that point where we were at disagreement, they attempted to do that, the board didn't want it, then there is a venue for that dispute, which is the division of administrative hearings, of administrative hearing for that dispute.
Mr. Townsend? That's, that's what I was gonna ask, so, in a practical sense, as of now, they say they're gonna be up in Davenport, they go, oh, sorry, you proved, now we're going down to Lakeland Highlands, that has to come back to us, right?
That's correct.
And we'll say, we'll say, no, 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 and then, and then we'll fight, and the fight will happen, and that will hold them off.
Right, and it's a different venue for this particular fight than, than just going to the State Board.
Well, and the State Board's gonna be, be different by the time this happens, I suspect, anyway.
But we will certainly, at least, we'll at least contact.
But I wouldn't hold it up.
Okay.
Yeah, just at that, at that point, I, I think we were treated like a contractual dispute, and submitted to no.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's, probably doesn't hurt to say, hey, y'all come back here looking to go to Lakeland Highlands expecting a fight, I mean, I think, put them on notice tonight.
I think they've got that, yes, I think we made that clear with the last conversation, but it never hurts to reinforce.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Are we, have we, on, I'd like to ask about R-65, the resolution regarding the COPs and extenuating it, extending it, excuse me, for another year, and I know Mr. Prun and I had some conversations on the phone, but once again, we knew that this was coming up for renewal, 2018 from 15, and my question is, why didn't we go out for bid prior to now to have something ready to go, why are we extending it another year? I mean, I know why we're extending it another year, my question is, we knew it was coming up, why didn't we react proactively and have an RFP done and ready for us to approve this month?
Yeah, we, we could have gone out to RFP prior to this.
Yes, sir.
We ran out of time when the bank called, I want to say, two months ago, and asked whether we wanted to extend for one, two, or three years, at that time, or earlier, we could have gone up to RFP, but there, we didn't have time, so that, that's why we're recommending and have accepted a one year, so that we will do an RFP within the next year.
Okay, and then, sort of tied in with this, I know that you use financial consultants, although it's no longer Jerry Ford and Associates, I think there's some people up in Jacksonville who you have ties with, is that who reviewed this COPs?
No, the PFM is not in Jacksonville, they're in Orlando.
Orlando, okay, but it's the folks that you've been working with, so I.
Not on this.
Not on this, I understand that, but who did your COPs analysis, is the question?
The, the analysis on the, it was a swap analysis.
Okay.
And the branch of PFM did that, but they're not the financial advisor.
I understand, but you did use PFM to do the swap analysis?
Yes, every, for the last three years, on our comprehensive financial report, they have, we need a swap analysis done, so we book our number, and we have used them for the last two or three years to do that, so when this came up, we just used them for.
And who had we used prior to that, to do these analyses?
Swap, Swap International, there's a swap company that was, that we used prior to.
Okay.
I can give you the name of the firm.
And are we, are we as a board gonna talk about having an investment advisor, as we call it, because now we, we've been kind of going out to different people and doing different pieces, and.
Yes, we're bringing that back to the board.
You are bringing that back, would that be before the year's up, do you think?
Yeah, we were actually waiting, the, the big push will be if the sales tax goes through, so.
Not if, when.
When, when that goes through, yes, we will need.
Working very hard.
That's when bonding issues will come up, and we will need an advisor.
At that point in time, so we would look either towards the end of the year or the first part of next year, perhaps?
I think it'll be before the end.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. County, have any, any other questions, comments about the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, this might be an opportune moment, I sent an email to board members yesterday, and I apologize for the late notice, we are moving quickly, but I sent an email to you yesterday about a lawsuit that was filed last week in a federal court, it's entitled a petition for appointment of a neutral umpire, and it has to do with the, with the school board's insurance claims in the wake of, of Hurricane last year, Hurricane Irma, and as you will recall, and I've tried to detail this in the memo that I sent to you yesterday, as you will recall, the district has contracted with a gentleman by the name of Scott Favre, out of Mississippi, to act as our public adjuster in this matter, and it's potentially, you know, potentially hundreds of millions of dollars of damages that the district might be able to recover, either through insurance or from FEMA, as a result of the storm damage. We're using a process that is called the appraisal process, it's different from what you're, what you're typically used to when you think of as an appraiser, it's something similar to an arbitration, but each side of the district and the carrier select an appraiser that go out and evaluate each site and each building, and then there's, then the appraisers select an umpire who is supposed to be neutral, and whose decision is binding, sort of like an arbitrator, and we were rocking along, negotiating the appointment of a, of a neutral, and as you can imagine, the appointment of your neutral is important, it's important that they actually be neutral and not someone who is going to be, to have predilection for one side or the other, and so we were negotiating, our appraiser was negotiating with their appraiser in good faith, rocking along, and suddenly, a, a federal lawsuit was dropped on us for naming, petitioning for the appointment of, of an umpire by the federal court in Tampa, and naming individuals that, that they would like to have appointed, that we do not believe are neutral, and, you know, in, in initial, initial look at it, that appears to be an administrative matter, okay, let's go file an answer and tell the court who we would like to have, and let the court make a decision, it is not that simple, among other things, under the federal rules, if we respond to this lawsuit, we're going to be required to file our counterclaims, any counterclaims we have at that time, it will be months before the district is prepared to do that, because of the, the sheer number of buildings that have to be appraised and, and the claims that have to be assessed, but it, I spoke at length with, with Mr. Favre and with his, with the appraiser, and got a, got a feeling for just how important that is, and of course, then this lawsuit was filed, and my first response was to, to call our friend John Stidham, who has frequently represented the district in federal claims, and before, most of your times, was very successful in bringing home a huge bit of federal litigation, bit of litigation against, in a complex construction matter, and sat down with John, and John and I looked at it, and he said, this, this is, there's, there's more to this than meets the eye, we, we then conversed with Mr. Favre, an attorney that frequently represents or works with him in their claims, and decided we needed to have a meet and greet, so, yesterday, she flew in from Puerto Rico, where she's currently working on claims down there, and it appears to me, first off, I would much rather do this in an attorney-client session, we would typically do this in an attorney-client session, because it's litigation strategy on a case that's currently been filed, and, and if we had, if we had the luxury of time, I would simply come to you today and say, I'd like to have an attorney-client session at the next board meeting, I do want to have an attorney-client session at the next board meeting, and we will talk about this one, and I'll announce that right now, we need to have an attorney-client session at the next board meeting, we will notice it, we will advertise it, Mr. Stidham will be present, co-counsel may be present, members of the school board, superintendent, myself, and we will make the arrangements for that, so I've now made a public announcement that we need to have an attorney-client session, but unfortunately, this is a case in which, because they have filed, the clock started running, and we have to either file an answer or do something responsive by October 31st, so we, obviously, we don't have another school board meeting before that, and rather than trying to drag you all back here for a, a special board meeting for the purpose of an attorney-client session, I, I just, I reluctantly decided I would, I'd just speak to you in public about it, Mr. Stidham is here to answer any questions, but the, the bottom line is, we believe that we would be, that there are, there are several reasons why we ought to be in state court, not in federal court, not the least of which is the policy seems to give us the choice of venue, but also, there's an advantage in, in filing the suit and naming, naming the party you want instead of, instead of responding to theirs, there was the possibility that we could have asked to, to remand that case to the state court here, but if we did that, we would still be defending their lawsuit instead of having them defend ours, we want the opportunity to petition the court to appoint a true neutral, someone who's, who's got the credentials and the experience, and actually, we have in mind individuals who actually have written textbooks on this, but as I mentioned, it's potentially a very big deal, the attorneys would work on a contingency fee basis, so there would be no obligation to the board if there's no recovery, I have, I have provided to you a copy of the petition and a copy of the, the representation letter which we received yesterday afternoon, and tonight at the school board meeting during my report, I will ask the chair to amend the agenda to authorize the filing of an, of an action in state court, once again, this will be essentially a mirror image of the action that they filed in, in federal court, but with the board as the plaintiff instead of, instead of the petitioner, instead of the respondent, and naming the, the individuals that we would like to have appointed as, as the umpire in this case, in an effort to make sure that we've got a truly, a truly fair shot at, at recovering all the damages that were caused by that storm. There, there's also, this is a separate, there are two recoveries here, one from insurance, another from FEMA, it's also the case that. It's also the case that if we are successful in this endeavor, FEMA's regulations would allow for the recovery of any attorney... For reimbursement of attorney fees that you had paid as part of that contingency. It will not involve budgeted funds. It's strictly contingency pay. But if we are successful, there is a likelihood that even those contingency fees that were paid out would be reimbursed by FEMA. Now, I have Mr. Stidham here, who is more, more versed and more polished in the, in traversing the challenges of federal courts. If you have questions, we will entertain those, but I will bring that to you during the attorney's report. You know, I can, I can on my own authority move, act to remove a case from, or to remand a case from federal court to state court. But if we're filing a lawsuit, the law says the school board is the entity that has the authority, the capacity to sue and be sued, and I will not file an action without, without your express authority. Once again, I apologize. I would prefer to have brought that to you in an attorney-client session and then asked you for your authority in public meeting. But we simply don't have the luxury of time to advertise that, so here we are, and I'll bring it to you this evening.
So just as a procedural matter, are there two motions? One to amend the agenda and one to request an authority?
Yes, sir. I'll ask, I'll ask you to amend the agenda. Number one, to authorize the, authorize this suit in state court for the petition, petition to appoint a neutral umpire. And I'll, and I'll present to you the fee agreement that has been presented by, by Mr. Stidham and Ms. Nicholson.
Okay. So two motions?
Yes, sir.
And are there any questions for the board members? Ms. Fields?
I just want to know, this is dated on October the 11th, I believe. And so I'm just wondering, why are we just getting it?
And that's, that is, that is when it was filed, and we've been working on it. Once again, initially, it looked like primarily an administrative matter, but we had conference calls with, with Mr. Farr and his associates, then with their counsel, and then brought Mr. Stidham in. And, and their counsel, and the, the actual meeting took place yesterday, at which it was determined that this would, ought to be a strategy rather than simply filing an answer in federal court, which we would normally do as a matter of course. So my apologies, it just, it took several days to get the parties together and to figure, to determine that that was the course of action we ought to take instead of simply answering the complaint.
This is a lot to get you on.
Yes, ma'am.
Very short on the time.
Yes, ma'am. And I, and I do apologize for that.
Very important decision. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes. As far as having two motions, why can't we just amend the agenda now and put it on the ones that are read to add it to the agenda, and then we just move on?
I think the chair has to find cause to amend it. We can go ahead, we can go ahead and do it, and at the meeting, he can announce that he finds cause to amend.
What I'm saying is, in the beginning, normally, the superintendent reads any changes or additions.
Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
That's what I'm saying. Just make it go quicker and easier.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Stidham, did I, did I miss anything that we need to relay to the board today? Any questions for me or from Mr. Stidham?
So there's just going to be then the one item that's already on the agenda, and then we're going to vote on that item?
Well, when, when we get to the attorney's report, there will be two items. Number one is to authorize a lawsuit, and number two is to enter into a fee agreement.
Okay. They'll be added ahead of time.
Okay. So those are the two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just to confirm the obvious, the contingency is based on recovery overall from insurance and from FEMA both?
Yes, sir. No, no, this is on the insurance recovery. The insurance recovery, not the FEMA recovery.
That's right.
Yeah. Yes, this is the insurance recovery. We, and I will tell you, we, we felt like the process was going pretty smoothly. It takes a long time. We have 150 damaged campuses. Each one of those has many buildings. So it takes a lot of time. It's just the nature of the process. But we thought it was rocking along pretty smoothly, and, and Mr. Keys, our appraiser, indicated that he thought that he had a very cordial, honorable conversation going on with the, with the appraiser for the insurance companies. And this just dropped like a box of rocks, and everybody went, what? And, and so, you know, the initial response was, okay, let's, let's, let's go file our answer in federal court. That's simple enough. But then, as we dug into it, we realized, no, if we do that, we're going to have to do all of our counterclaims, and that involves wrapping up all of the evaluations of the damages at the school, which is what is taking so long in the first place. So...
Well, is there, I mean, presumably, I mean, Irma damaged a lot of counties.
Yes.
Has this happened to a lot of other counties?
But there, I cannot speak for them. Typically, in storms, you know, we all have different carriers. Ours, ours is a consortium of carriers that's coordinated through Lloyds of London. And each, each company does things differently, but it is, it is a normal practice, a standard practice for public entities like school districts and counties and cities that have extensive inventories of buildings in the wake of a storm when we're trying to navigate a very sophisticated process that often involves international insurance companies. It is, it is a standard practice to employ the services of a public adjuster, and Mr. Farr does that all over the state, all over the country. And I mentioned he's down in Puerto Rico, if we speak, and I think he's pretty much taken up residence down there.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, did they get impatient with us for some reason? That they didn't get impatient with other counties? Like, have other counties settled out?
Yeah, I have, no, I don't, I'm not aware of counties that it resolved. This is a lengthy process. And I don't, I really don't think it had anything to do with them getting frustrated with us. I think they've got a smart lawyer over there, and they're doing things for tactical reasons that we are, we are figuring out as we go along. But they, they really short-circuited the process, and it was a surprise. And, you know, best I can tell you.
Ms. Cunningham?
This is not regarding this comment. It's just addressed to our attorney. Would now be an appropriate time to ask a question?
Yes.
On a different item?
Well, yes, but give me just one moment if you don't...
Go ahead. Finish with this subject.
I'm still a little concerned about the procedural process of this. I just want to make sure I get it right. So if you need my permission for an emergency item, then I'll give you that.
During, yes, during the, during the attorney's report, we'll add authority to file suit.
Exactly.
And we will add the representation agreement.
So I'm confused about the word amend the agenda. So we don't need to do anything with the agenda? It's good.
Well, once we, once, the agenda was published seven days ago.
They've already done it.
It's added?
It's already...
Yeah. Sorry, it's on September 13th.
My bad.
That's where I was confused.
We're good. We're good.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, thank you. Different item. We received some information in the past week, 10 days, regarding the trademark issue.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, when are we going to discuss that?
You can certainly discuss it. We have already resolved that and sent out a letter to them, number one, disputing that there was any violation, but number two, indicating that, that there was, that we're not invested in the term acceleration academies and that we can shift our terminology and use another term. But the letter went out, went out on Friday, and I thought you were copied. If you're not, I'll make sure you get it.
No, the last thing I got, you got a different... The last thing I got was, no.
Yeah, I'll make sure we get a copy to you.
It didn't look good because we had not responded timely and on and on.
But I, I trust that it is resolved, but...
I'd like a copy of whatever you sent out then as a follow-up to this.
Yes, ma'am. I, I had intended for you to be copied on it if you weren't. I apologize. We want a copy too.
Okay. All right.
But yes, it was, it was a one-pager that says, we disagree with your, with your allegation, but in the interests of peace and goodwill, we don't have any interest in continuing to use that term.
Okay. Any other questions related to this, this particular agenda item? So, Ms. Cunningham, will you make the motion to...
Certainly.
For, to add Mr. Keys to the audit committee?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yes, I'd be happy to. He's a wonderful young man and very excited to serve, so...
Since you recommended it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments about the agenda? All right. So the next item on our work session agenda is a, is a review from Dr. Freo. Dr. Freo, will you come forward, please? Now, this is, this is identified as a review of the strategic planning retreat, although there may be some parts of that in here. Actually, this is a review of the superintendent's evaluation.
Let me remind you that at our retreat, I distributed to each of you and to the superintendent an evaluation form related to an evaluation superintendent for last year. Those were sent to me. I did an analysis of them. I prepared a report for you, which you have at your place. I also prepared a PowerPoint presentation in which I would like to go through some of the highlights of the report and then entertain any questions that we may have. There were three different sections to the evaluation. The first section dealt with behavioral indicators, and there was a four-point scale, as you see on the chart. Those were the 14 items that were related to the first matter, which was board relationships. And I highlighted in blue the ones that were above 3.5, that is, they were between 3.5 and 4.0. Now, 4 was satisfactory, meets expectations. 5 was, or 4, excuse me, 3 was meets expectations. 4 was above that. 4 was the highest possible score. So all of the ones that you see in blue are somewhere between halfway up the scale and all the way up to 4, which would be reflective of very high ratings. And as you can see, I believe that 11 out of the 14 are in blue. I was going to highlight in coral, the ones that were below 3.0. That was below the meeting expectations, but there were none that fell there, so you see none in coral. The next area was general leadership. Again, you can see 10 out of 11 of those are shaded in blue, which means that 10 out of 11 were above 3.5 average. The next area was staff leadership. Here, we can see that 6 out of the 11 were above 3.5. You can see 2 of them were notably lower than the others, even though they were above the meets expectations. And those 2 were related to staff morale either at school or at district office. The next area was curriculum leadership, and you can see in this case that all 6 of the specific items were above 3.5. The next one was relationship with stakeholders, and there we see 5 out of the 6 were above 3.5. There was only 1 under 3.5, and it was almost up to 3.5, which would have been a good rating in and of itself. The next area, physical responsibilities, you see that 4 out of the 10 were above 3.5. And in this particular case, we have more of them that were below 3.5 than above 3.5. And let me again reinforce, 3, below 3.5 is not necessarily a bad rating. Actually, 3 is acceptable, meets expectations. 3.5 was a somewhat higher standard. And you'll see that 2 out of these in particular were lower than the others, and 1 was fines resources to augment district resources, number 3 on the chart there. And then number 7 on the chart recommends appropriate reserves and CIP allocations. The next area was professional growth, and you can see that all 5 of those were above And then in the next chart, what I've done is to take the average rating for each of the 7 performance areas that we have just gone over, and you will see that the average for 5 of the 7 is above 3.5. 2 of them are almost up to 3.5. And juxtaposed with that, I again have also the superintendent's self-evaluation, which is labeled JB, and the last column is the differences. And you will see that the superintendent's evaluation was slightly higher, but certainly in the same ballpark with the board evaluations. In terms of overall Part 1 ratings, the overall board average was a 3.6 out of 4.0. You can see that there was some variation from one board member to another, which is quite common when you do evaluations for any number of reasons. The superintendent's self-evaluation, 3.8, very, very close to the overall board average. Then moving on to Part 2 of the evaluation form, there's a 5-point rating scale going all the way from totally unsatisfied at the bottom to very satisfied at the top. In the next chart, you see the 5 goals that the board had set and the ratings of the superintendent for each one of those 5 goals. And you can see that the board average was a perfect 5.0 for 4 of them and a 4.57 for the last one. And again, if you look at the very bottom, the average for the board was a very high 4.91, slightly higher than the superintendent's self-evaluation, which was a 4.80. The overall Part 2 ratings, oops, I'm sorry. In this chart, you can see the overall is a 4.97, which is just under a perfect overall rating. The Part 3 was for an overall assessment, taking into consideration both Part 1 and Part 2. And you can see there's a 5-point scale, again, that goes from total dissatisfaction up to feeling that the performance was outstanding. And we can see there that the average was 4.54, the board average. Superintendent's self-rating, 4.8, so again, the 2 are very close to each other. In summary, the board ratings of the superintendent for behavioral measures were very positive. The majority of them were more than halfway between meets expectations and exceeds expectations. The highest behavioral ratings were for curriculum leadership and relationships with stakeholders. Something got cut off there in the end. I'm sorry about that. The lowest behavioral ratings were for meets expect... I'm sorry. Were for physical responsibilities and staff leadership, but still substantially above meets expectations, substantially above 3.0. The board's ratings of the superintendent's on performance measures, that was the degree to which the progress on the 5 goals met with your approval, was extremely positive, with an average just below a perfect 5.0. And when you look at the overall, and I see this is just about totally cut off, the board's overall ratings of the superintendent were very positive. I had a few procedural recommendations. One, the board, and I made this recommendation last year as well, and that is that the board chronologically aligned the activities of strategic planning, the superintendent evaluation, and the superintendent's salary and contract considerations. Well, we got 2 of those in perfect alignment. And in talking with Mr. Wilson, I think we're also getting the last part in alignment where, at a particular point in time now, we're going to look at how we did with the strategic plan, then do the evaluation of the superintendent, and then go right into the salary discussion and the contract extension. And I think Mr. Wilson will have some words about that. My second procedural recommendation was that the board should conduct periodic compensation studies so that you can see whether the superintendent's salary here is in line with the superintendent's salary in a set of comparable districts. And then, number 3, I believe that each of the 3 sections in the evaluation form should have the same 5-point scale. That was my bad, in particular since some of you like to do the average. It was hard to do the average. We had a 4-point here and a 5-point there. In the future, it will all be a 5-point scale.
5.
And that's what I have for you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might... might have.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Prao? So I have talked with superintendent, and what we would like, what we have agreed to do, both of us agree that we'd like to talk further about possible contract extension as well as any salary recommendations, and bring those to the November 13 meeting, if that's okay with the board. Yes, ma'am?
So in preparation for that, and I had requested, it's been about a year now, that Ms. Tendra go out with Ms. Byrd's approval and find out kind of where we were as far as salaries, because I think that is very important to be fair and equitable based on our accomplishments as well as our size of our district and so forth. So my stuff now is relatively outdated, it's been well over a year.
Well, it was from last year. I did provide some data to you.
Yes.
You did want some additional larger districts.
Right.
That we were not able to find immediately. However, I can't update that for you.
That would, well, just not from, I think, for Mr. Wilson and for the board at this point, because I think that's very relative now, and make sure that it's updated with current 2018 numbers. That's all I was going to offer, because we had already kind of done that in preparation for, so I just want to be sure we have that data to make a good decision, because I'm sure we would want to go forward with this. What is your timeline, Mr. Chair?
Well, I thought what we would do is talk about it and hopefully make a decision on the 13th.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's right, yeah, that's what I was hoping, so that this could be done before the end of the year for superintendent.
Exactly. I would like to wrap it up.
Okay.
At our next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Townsend?
Hello.
Any other questions, comments? So Ms. Portis, were you going to give us some additional information?
Certainly, I can give it to you by next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Prao, as always, thank you so much for your hard work and efforts. We appreciate you and all you've done to help us out with this.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Aramark contract. I think Mr. Townsend had some questions about this, and.
Hi, Mr. Townsend.
Hello. So do you just want me to ask things, or do you have stuff? I'm sorry.
Well, I looked at the agenda item that you had attached to your business, and your first item was what was DOE square footage for custodians? I mean, you can go through whichever way you want to go.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I wasn't sure if you had like a path you wanted to go through, or I can, yeah, why don't you just start?
Well, DOE, it's 19,000, and gross, and what is the square footage for Palm Beach County Public School is 24,000 net. And that was changed in 2012. It used to be 22,000, but in 2010, 2011, we all went through the recession, and several school districts did the same thing, where we had to cut our budget almost $3 million. So we got rid of 108 FTE, and therefore we had to increase that square footage to 24,000.
What's, you mentioned that grows at net. What's the difference between grows and net?
The gross has all the lockers, the areas that you don't really clean, it's just the square footage of the building. The net is the cleanable area.
Okay. So it's, what's the, because it sounded like you said 19,000 gross and then 24,000 net.
That's correct.
What is the, what is the state's net?
Probably like 17. And when you look at the analysis, the reports that we have looked at did not give us the net for this state, they just gave us the 19,000. And in that case, our, if our net is 24,000, our gross is probably like 28.
Okay. Okay. So the, I guess the concern that I've heard is, and I think you're probably hearing this too, yeah, that's, I don't think any of the state is known for being particularly generous in its square footage or what it asks us to do, and we're considered over that. Yeah, one anecdotal example, last year I went out to Ridge for a day, Ridge communicated that, and I think they only have 1 custodian on during the day, but there's just 1 that seemed pretty, like a pretty big job. So I, and so.
Well, I, you know, I've been meeting with the custodians, and I started meeting with them in April, and at the first April meeting, they didn't bring this to my attention. So I've been talking to our director custodial to see how we can do that. He gave me the analysis in phases, how we can phase it in to decrease the square footage that they clean. Right now with Citrus Ridge, we ask for a full custodian, not Citrus Ridge because of their population. So I met with HR, and we agreed to putting on 4 and 1/2 FTEs, so that will help. And this is mostly with our high enrollment school, Ridge, Citrus Ridge, Chain and Lakes, Horizon, and Sykes. And then Mr. Townsend also gave me what it would be to bring back the discretionary of 10 hours per week for elementary and 20 for middle and high, and that equates to like 35 FTE, but that's like 900,000. So I'm talking to HR in steps, so that we can get back, and certainly I want to decrease the square footage also, but we also have this budgetary constraint. And I want to mention, it's not just custodial, we can start into facilities to maintenance. We're 309 staff members short there from the state recommendation, but we just have to work with what we have within our budget limits.
Is there some indication of higher levels of workers' comp or entries recently in the last few years on?
We just got, we just pulled that information through our public relations with branch management, and I would have to bring that back, but no, I didn't see anything that stood out from before, so we'll have to look at that.
And the structure, just for the board who may have been, everybody may be completely familiar with this, but it's, Aramark's an odd kind of structure. They actually sit within our organization, like Aramark employees are, I think Doug is actually, you're in Aramark.
There are only 6 Aramark employees. Out of over 600 and something custodians, only 6. We have 4 right here on our campus in the mobile home, in the portable, whatever you call it. I don't want to call it a school portable, because it's not a school, but it is a portable.
The igloo.
And then we have 2 at our Fern Street address, for the total is 6.
And, I'm sorry.
So to answer that, we have 6 Aramark employees, and we have 4 here.
And they essentially act as like directors that are regional directors?
Not necessarily.
How does that work?
Because it's all mixed up. We have Doug as the director, and then we have Sam Beckwith as the operations manager, then assistant manager is Hector, and an administrative assistant is Dee Paris. Then we have 2 assistant managers at the North Fern Road location, Matthew Milken and Enis Castro. So it's not all the high levels that are Aramark, they're mixing. But they're all managers, except for Dee, who's administrative assistant.
And do they have the, how does discipline work if there's a problem with someone coming up, or there's something, how does that?
The Aramark employees?
No, I'm sorry, for our employees related to, like, if there's a disciplinary action that management needs to take, does Aramark decide that?
No, 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 no. It's based on our policy, and we work closely with HR on disciplinary matters. It's not Aramark's policy. They are governed by our, our custodians that are school district employee are governed by our regulation. For Doug and the 5, yes, Aramark reviews them for their performance criteria, but I also meet with Aramark Regional Superintendent or Supervisor twice a year. I met with them October and in April to go over Doug's evaluation. And I mentioned to Doug and the 4 and the 5 are the Aramark employees, that I will look at their evaluation also, even though Aramark does it.
This is sort of a sales tax related question. I understand that also the way, one of the advantages of having Aramark here is they buy, they buy and own the equipment, so we don't have to, right? That's the, you guys make the capital investment in that. In theory, would sales tax money be able to pay for maintenance equipment? Does that have any?
No, that is per their contract. When Aramark contract was done, that they're responsible for the equipment. In the addendum that you just saw, they added 5,000 more to that original contract per year for equipment, but that, so they're responsible for that. We do maintain the equipment, our staff, but we're not responsible for the purchase.
Yeah, that actually, I don't think that's what I meant to ask, I'm sorry. So just hypothetically, could we buy maintenance equipment with sales tax money? Could we, the school board, buy that?
No, it's capital project, and I would see that as tangible, because I didn't see, it depends on the cost, but I wouldn't think so, because it's not a real capital project. Sales tax is for capital projects, for improvement store building capacity, it's not for operations like that.
Do the finance guys agree with that? You do? Okay. All right, well, this is helpful. I, again, I think we, this is on a five-year cadence, right?
The contract, yes.
So in the short term, I would love to see the schedule by which, you know, the phased end part of reducing the square footage, what that entails.
We start with a 4 and 1/2, and then we'll try to work towards a 35. And like I said, I've been meeting with the custodians, and I've told them at every meeting that I'm working on this. So they're aware that we are, we're listening to them, and I'm working with Doug and Aramark for the training also.
Yeah, no, they, I mean, they seem reasonably pleased with the direction of things, but I, this dates back several months to, I just wanted to get a, have the board have a full sense of how Aramark sits in the, and I guess one other thing, just, do we know what Aramark's margin is on, like, what their, what the, I obviously, they're in this to make money. Do we know what the margin is on it?
I just know what's the contract for the agreement you saw and the monthly, I do not know.
Okay, all right.
Okay? Certainly.
I thought there was a, you said these are state numbers, state for the square footage?
The 19,000.
Is there a national?
Yes, it's like, it's much higher, it's like 26,000. The national is much higher.
So we're more like the national than?
Right, the national here is 24,000. I looked up several national, then there's a range between 28 and 31. Palm Beach County is at 28, Volusia is at 26, Hillsborough is at 23, and, but I'm not saying that we shouldn't decrease it. We looked at all of those, but I'm not saying that, because if we could, certainly I would like that.
I just, because I thought that we were with national standards.
Yes, we are within that range.
Do we know why the state has such, I mean, the state usually goes the opposite way, why the state has such much lower numbers than national?
The state wasn't specific, so I don't know how they measure, because you can do cleaning, single point group, and that affects the square footage, but it's just a number, so I don't know what your, right, how they came up with that. They did not explain how they approach it with the custodians.
Okay. Because I had heard that we were compared to, that we were within national standards. Okay.
Ms. Reynolds?
I was just going to ask if you could keep us updated on this. It's not necessarily every month, but maybe every quarter, if we could get an update of, and it can just be a document attached, it doesn't necessarily need to be a presentation, but just so that we can kind of see how it's moving. That would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
Where were on the anonymous survey?
We, we talked about it, I talked about it, and we didn't want to do it, because there were, we were going through negotiations, so I wanted to be first thing next year, the beginning of next year. That's my plan, unless the board wants something else different.
I just don't want it to get lost.
No, no, definitely not.
So just to recap, you're focused right now particularly on the high-growth schools, the high population school like Ridge, like, like, interest Ridge. I think that's an appropriate focus first, because I would guess, I'm not a custodial expert, but the square footage where there's not as many kids is probably not the intensiveness of the cleaning, I would guess, as that everybody's nodding.
You're correct. I have seen pictures why we need more, with the bathrooms and the.
So we do have a sense of priority of how we're doing.
Any other questions?
No, sorry, not on this. There's not a board's comment section.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to ask.
Oh. Yeah, actually, we will be taking the finance, so.
It just didn't look like it was listed in the agenda, so I don't want to miss it.
I think, I think we're kind of vacillating back and forth between the, between, oh, yeah, no, there wasn't, you're right, my mistake, okay. So at this time, I'm opening the floor to board comments.
I have, this is a question, and I don't particularly know who will know the answer, maybe finance, but the federal relief dollars from hurricanes last year, I mentioned after our last Central Florida School Board Association meeting that the state was keeping 68% of folks to reimburse themselves, which we didn't really know why. Do we have any update on that as to why or?
Yeah, they're saying they paid for some of those students in the FTE, so they're saying what they paid, they're taking back and supplementing us with the difference. So that percentage is what the state funded there, and they took that away. We get to keep, or they pay us for the local.
Will that be a wash?
No, no, they're, no, they're, they're taking, they're saying we can't double dip in terms of an FTE and what we're paid for. So the state portion, that they paid us for those kids, they're taking back. So the percentage of the required local effort based on what relative that is to the entire state plus the entire funding is given. So districts that have higher property value, they take in less state money, if that makes sense. That's why our percentage is so much higher than the others.
Is that, I guess my question is, is that something that you understand and makes sense and you agree with, or is that something that we need to fight? Is really?
No, but we, I got with Wendy when I heard at our finance officers meeting in June that that's what they were doing, and Orange was pushing back big time, and they stopped, so I.
So how much does that cost us and what have we?
So we thought we were going to get roughly 5 million, I believe, and we're getting 2 and 1/2, 2.2.
Yeah, the numbers they gave us for the state last time was the DOE is keeping, or the state is keeping 47 million to reimburse themselves and dispersing 46 million to the counties. So they're keeping more than 51% of everything that was dispersed.
Instead of fighting, I want to see in the legislative, when the funding comes up, because that now is money they did not expect. So that should, I would think, come back to us in a base student or something, you know, when we, when we ask, so I'm kind of holding up, see, not holding my breath, because I know they do, but. That's money they did not plan on getting. They paid it out and then they took it back, so.
Any other board comments?
Leadership, BARTO leadership, Education Day is November 8. It's coming up quickly, and tentatively, they would like to meet the board maybe at 3:30, but they're working on the schedule, and Mr. Hill is working on the schedule. So if something doesn't work out, it might not, the day is November 8, but it might not be 3:30. But right now, and we're staying, and they're staying in the BARTO area, so it will probably be at BARTO High if it's at 3:30, it may be at BARTO Middle if it's at 2:00. But right now, we're trying to keep it at 3:30. But Susan will let you know as soon as it's firmed up, but we're hoping that as many board members as possible can attend to answer questions. That's it.
That's it, thank you.
Concerning OCAUS, and you know, I think we're past the implementation stage, and we're kind of in the usage and glitch and fix stage. The, I know either last week or the week before, there was a fairly significant outage heading into a weekend that had something to do, I coincide with somebody's date or something, and I've heard some input that there are some issues, at least some inconvenience issues and some additional complexity issues for schools within schools, like if you're, like a Summerlin at BARTO High, or Harrison at Lakeland High, that toggling back and forth between the kids has become, is kind of a challenge. And my point in raising those is not to say, oh, what are we doing about that? It's more, this was a big deal to implement, we're still, there's still a lot of user stuff going on. I want to make sure that we're not, like, sort of losing sight of that, and are we, is there, what? that, and are we, is there, what would be really nice in the next couple of weeks, or every, next time we meet, whatever, is like a sheet from IT or from whomever that says, here are top 15 issues we see with FOCUS that we're working to fix. This just won't be fixed, because we don't have the functionality in it, or we have to, you know, like, it doesn't have to be 15, but you know, it, I think that would be, A, be very useful information for the board, I think it'd be very informational, it'd be very helpful information for the stakeholders as a whole, because it shows that our folks are on top of that, and working to improve their experience, so that would be a very nice thing to see. Additionally, I just want to give props to one of our kids, we've got a student at one of our local high schools, who's a journalism student, and who knows a lot about code, and he actually found a security flaw and got us to fix it, that apparently a whole bunch of other districts hadn't caught, and I guess FOCUS itself didn't have the flaw in the, so that's, you know, that's pretty impressive, and why it's good to be listening to our users.
That's what I do when I have a technical problem, I turn it over to the kids. Any other, any other comments? No, I mean that seriously.
No, they're insightful.
So, I just have a couple of comments. I had hoped to have some contract negotiations with Mr. Bridges and Mrs. Matthews wrapped up by the end of the year. It's, the issues are complicated and they're complex, and we're still working on that, I don't think that's probably going to happen, it's not critical, because both of them have contracts in place for a couple more years, so, you know, if the board would like for me to stay on again as chair next year, I'm happy to continue those negotiations, and if that's not the case, I'll turn it over to the new board chair, but I think it's, there are a number of complexities there, and it's going to require a little bit more work. Mrs. Cunningham, I just want to mention to you, I mentioned this earlier, there is a change in the November meeting from 12:30 to 11:30, we have an HR heading that we need to take care of, so.
On what date, sir?
On the 13th.
Of November?
Of November.
So, we're meeting at 11:30?
Instead of 12:30.
Thank you very much.
And lastly, I would like to make a few comments about the half-cent sales tax. I know Mrs. Cunningham endorsed the half-cent sales tax, correct?
I have, and there's a new video out there, it's been put together by the parents, if you will, I don't know if everybody's seen it yet, but it's out on social media, families actually got together, created a video from Northeast Polk, and have put it out there with their kids, so it's really awesome.
And we shared it with our--
Well, I'm trying to figure out and get permission and all of that, so I'm working on that, yes, sir.
Is this one with the two kids putting it on?
Yes.
It's wonderful.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I'm hoping they'll put that on social media as well. But, you know, I just want to say a couple words about that, and we, you've heard me say this before, in my opinion, this is just my take on the situation, over the past decade, probably going back a little bit further than that, we've seen the district lose roughly $110 million a year in revenues, however you want to describe that, essentially, those are cuts, and we, and the state has continued to mandate that we provide additional services as a district, even while we're seeing cuts, budget cuts, and revenue cuts along the way, this half-cent sales tax is critical, it's absolutely critical, and I'm hoping, I'm offering this to all of our employees out there, it's going to be incredibly important to our school district, so we need your help. And I'm supporting it, I'm endorsing it, supporting it, and I hope you think you will too. And those are my comments. Any other comments from board members? Okay, and we do have a, we have--
Students.
Yes, we have students at four, and we do have a parent, so we want to get started promptly at 4 o'clock, please. This meeting is adjourned.